One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now the Texas flag, please.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
At this time, we're going to move on to 3.1, Franklin County appraisal district audit.
No, that's just information for us.
Anybody have any questions from that? I think that was more lack of information. Okay, now let's move on to 3.2, Franklin County appraisal district proposed budget. Did anyone have any questions regarding that? No? Okay, we'll just move on to 4.1 is the animal shelter. Do we have anything from the animal shelter today? No, okay. 4.2, the invisible court. Okay. 4.3, parks and recreation.
Come on Stacy, surely you've got something. Oh, okay.
4.4, the public works. No? 4.5, the wastewater? No? Okay, well. At this time, I number five is for public comments. I did not receive any comments on cards. Amy, do you have anything? No? Anybody? This is the time for the public or media to address the city council on any subject. You may also choose to wait and make your comment during the add-on discussion. However, the Texas Open Meetings Act prohibits the city council from discussing any issue which the public has not given 72 hours notice. Issues raised may be referred to the city staff or research or possible future action. Comments are limited to three minutes. If there are no comments, anyone? Ms. Barrett?
Julie Barrett, 3749, County Road 2426, and also work at Beninge Bines at 22 Highway 11. Here with Sigma Partners, as I have been many times. Since it's been going on a few months now, and nothing has changed, just several things we have questions about. One, has any citations been issued? Because that's been a point of contention between, is it smoke, is it steam? Which for us, doesn't really matter. It's more about the toxins, what's coming out of the plant. So I'd previously asked what the council had done to help with the situation. And I was not given an answer. Do we have an answer?
I'm sorry, what's that?
What the city council has done to help with the situation with Texas Sigma Partners.
Okay.
Since Sigma, since this is not an agenda item, we can't respond to you.
So in the past, the residents in the area felt there was a lack of perceived concern. I mean, we feel it is a big endangerment to the community. So in the past, you said you could not do anything, so we want to know more. Is it you can't do anything, or you won't do anything? We, we love Windsboro, as I'm sure all of you do. We want people to come to our town, we want people to shop in our town. Enjoy the arts, enjoy the Bowery. Buy property here. I've already spoke to many people who are no longer going to buy property here. People that are avoiding shopping in Windsboro. So, I mean, that's hurting everyone in Windsboro. We have a business here. We've already had our customers telling us, you know, what's this awful stench? And I know some of you have, that you do not experience what we experience. But we've had our customers say this as well. And just some other thoughts. Would you want to be living next to Sigma? Would you want your children? Would you want your grandchildren, your mother? Just things to think about. And just the big thing is, we've been here since December, so months later, still nothing has happened. In our perception, we don't see any change. So what's it going to take to make a change? Basically, what a lot of us feel is you've let us live this way. And the reason is why? Why? Why is nothing being done? What's the benefit of not acting? By the city? That's just kind of a big question. Everyone we talk to is, why is the city not doing anything? What would be the benefit of you not acting on this? When we've begged and pleaded for months now? In our opinion, you put people in danger by your lack of action. It's more than a nuisance odor, and I know we talked about nuisance odor and citations and nuisance odor, but it's more than that. It's an endangerment to the people that live in the area. And it's disturbing and interrupting people's lives. So again, we just want to know, what are you going to do about it?
Okay, I'm just going to say this real quick.
She can't respond from our last meeting.
Did you get a chance to watch our last meeting by chance?
I was here, yes.
On the, what day was it?
Last Thursday, because I don't remember seeing you.
Okay, so we agreed at that meeting, and this is just fact, that we were having the soil tested, the water tested, and the air tested as well. We are getting those bids together, so we can get that done. We, we did that. And we also are sending a letter from myself, with the help of our attorney, to Sigma, asking them on certain topics. I can't, at this time, move that out, but... So, I just wanted to reinstate what was said at the last meeting. And so, that's just fact, just so that everybody's aware.
I, I did need to reiterate, I watched a recording of the meeting. I was not, didn't even understand I was watching it. So I was aware of the testing. It's just how long that's going to take is our concern. It's going to be another three months? Or five, six?
We're, we're waiting on the bids now. Okay, anyone else? Any other comments? Okay, so then let's move on to 6.1, consent items. Let's see what we have. This is the minutes from February 8, 2022. Anyone have any questions? Also have the minutes, February 17, 2022. Anyone have any questions regarding those minutes as well?
Madam Mayor, would the minutes be approved? As collected.
Second.
Okay, hold on approval.
Aye.
Judge and Carrie. Okay, so let's move on to 7.1, the ETCOG Wood County Broadband Initiative Presentation. Do we have, okay, please.
Thank you. Oh, hey David. I might actually hand off, my name is Kristoff Treyhan, I'm the director of the Wood County EDC, and we're here to speak to you tonight. But I think I'm going to hand off to Mr. Cleveland here first. He's the executive director of the East Texas Council of Governments. We're kind of co-presenting. I'll let David start off, and I'll come back to you guys in a minute.
That's what you call just arriving in the nick of time, all the way from Kilgore. It's good to be with you guys again tonight. It's always good to be in Wood County and in Windsboro. I'm excited to partner with the folks in Wood County and Kristoff to visit with you about something I know that you've already heard something about. And that's, for many, many years now, exactly 11, to be exact. We, the East Texas Council of Governments has been working diligently to address broadband needs that our businesses and residents have throughout the 14-county region in East Texas. Here's the bottom line up front. Today, broadband is really as close as it's ever become to a public utility. And I really believe very, very soon it will become one. And it's really the building block of business and commerce today. So when you have businesses that are looking in Windsboro, or anywhere in Wood County, or anywhere in East Texas, they look at location, location, location. But part of the thing that they, the requirements of doing business today is, as well, is they need excellent broadband service. And when I'm talking excellent broadband service, I'm not talking about dial-up. You know, I'm talking about high-speed internet service, that the speed of business, that business needs to be able to do commerce at the, at the rate that they need to do it today. And for those communities that do not have adequate broadband service, at the rate and speeds they need, at an affordable cost, those are the ones that are left behind. And if you're in a rural East Texas like we are, it means that we're automatically at a disadvantage. And that is, when you look at East Texas compared to Dallas, Houston, San Antonio, any of the major urbanized areas. They have a huge advantage over us, that, it, it really, it's not an indictment of the ISPs, the internet service providers that we have. They're really good companies doing the best they have. They have what, have to make what is called a business case, to be able to lay fiber in your neighborhood, and then complete last mile service to the home of the business. And in order to do that, they need something called density, which is population. And if the population is thin, that means that the return on their investment is much less than it would be in Dallas, San Antonio, or some of the urbanized areas. So as a, as a rural area, we've got to figure out a way to close the gap. So toward that end, we started working on this problem some 11 years ago. We worked first on the Broadband Technology Opportunities Program through the Obama administration, and that project didn't work out like we hoped. We then went with the State Department of Agriculture, they had something called Connected Texas, and we learned a lot from those folks, but it, it really didn't get to actual boots on the ground. Project identification that, that addresses actual needs that our businesses and residents have, so that we can move the ball forward. The good news is, we learned a lot from those two experiences. And we were finally able to put together a strategy and secure 400, I'm sorry, $375,000 in Federal Economic Development Administration funds. That's matched by $161,000 in local funds right here from the East Texas region. So our total budget is $536,000. What we're using that money for is working with Kristoff, and, and other, going county to county to county. And we have local project teams that are on the ground identifying the top three to five broadband needs that our businesses have. And then we're taking those critical needs, and converting them to actual projects with budgets associated with them. And then those become part of our strategic plan. And with that plan then, it positions us, and puts us in a unique position to be able to go after significant federal, state, and other funds that will be available very soon for broadband project implementation. The only, there's very few things about the pandemic that's really good news for us. But there is one good thing at least that came out of the pandemic. And that's that, in addition to focusing on business needs, we were able to convince the Economic Development Administration, because of the pandemic, that telecommuting is really critical. Because how many, many of us for many, many months, worked from home. So as a result, one of our three to five projects in Wood County can focus on residential broadband access as well, as long as it somehow supports telework. And so, the project team in Wood County, led by Kristoff and Lee Smith and others, have been working diligently on this project in Wood County for a number of months. And, and I want to turn it over to Kristoff now for more details on specific project that we have in mind for Windsboro. So with that, thank you for allowing me to be here with you, and he and I will both stand for questions.
Appreciate it, David. Yes, thank you again for letting us speak to you this evening. So as David referenced, the project we're interested in talking to you about today, we got the opportunity to meet with one of your council members, Randy Parrish, in advance of, of the city council meeting today, to discuss a project that would involve fiber optic deployment and public Wi-Fi for the downtown area, and possibly as well, the city park area, if we can make it work within the confines of the grant, for the city of Windsboro. The way we reached this project, we had, well, I shouldn't say we, it was precedes my time with the county. But Lee Smith, my board member who David referenced, had meetings with a lot of different civic leaders around the county in 2020 to find what the needs were and where they were at. We identified some great projects, and when we got our local ISP involved, Peoples Telecom, we found out that a lot of the projects that we thought we knew were in need, were actually either serviced or soon to be serviced through expansion plans that Peoples had on their own. Once again, were serviced by really great IPs, ISPs, so that really helped us in this regard. But the way we drilled down to the concept of fiber optic deployment and public Wi-Fi for our cities, and we've had similar conversations with the cities of Alba, Whitman, and soon to be Hawkins, is we looked at kind of what we had, where the needs were, and we saw what was successful for the city of Mineola. Public Wi-Fi for the city of Mineola has been very successful, not just in assisting with telework opportunities and in drawing people into their downtown, around their businesses, with public Wi-Fi. But it's been something that they've seen a continued interest in investing in, even into this current budget year with the ARPA dollars that they received. Investing in additional infrastructure to play off of their public Wi-Fi that they service through their city. So that's kind of where we're at today. We're working now with EdCog and their team of engineers and consultants to devise what would basically be the structure of what that project would look like, the potential costs of what that project would look like. So that we can have that documentation in our hands and in the city of Windsboro's hands, so that we can then take that and pursue grant dollars that are going to be coming down from the federal government in the next couple of months, as we see infrastructure bills pass. So that we can hopefully bring some of those dollars back home to Windsboro, Texas, and to Wood County. Did I hit the, did I hit the high notes? So what we're here to ask you guys today, we're, we're asking for a motion from the city council of Windsboro to approve of that concept, so that we can take that to the engineers and bring you back what would be a formal plan to devise a, a system like this for the city of Windsboro.
What would be the cost associated with that?
Now, to get this plan done, there is no cost to the city of Windsboro for this planning phase that we're talking about. Now, once we have this planning document in our hands, in order to pursue grant dollars, and of course, that would all be at the, at the behest of the city council of Windsboro, there may be matches that come with those federal dollars that come down. So it'll be up to the local government to, to utilize this, to strategize what federal dollars to best pursue. But for this phase of the project, for these, for these planning documents that we're getting done through EdCog and through their team of consultants, it comes at no cost to the city of Windsboro.
What's the catch?
I know. We were really lucky to be able to take advantage of a program like this, because like, as I mentioned, it really positions us in the best position possible to pursue the, quite frankly, windfall of federal dollars that are going to come down for infrastructure over the next couple of months.
Like you just mentioned, there's an expectation, talking with the, I should stand up. I just, in the last couple of weeks, spoke with the state broadband office director in Texas. And he indicated that he's expecting somewhere in the area, one to four billion dollars in funding to, to come from the infrastructure, the bipartisan infrastructure bill alone for broadband implementation projects. That's only one source. But you can't go to the federal government and just say, Windsboro needs high-speed internet service. You have to actually come with a plan, and says this is what it's going to cost, and this is how much we need. So we're getting the planning phase done, so that we can actually position East Texas, Wood County, and all our important counties to get as much funding as possible in the infrastructure.
Can I have any other questions?
Excuse me, I have a question for you. You, you mentioned Wood County, two or three times, Wood County. You mentioned some cities in Wood County. Is this package wrapped into all that?
Yes, so that's our overall five projects that we're submitting to the consultants that EdCog.
That's what I wanted to know. So there'll be other ones in?
Yes, yes, this is one project of, of the total number of five that we're going to work in Wood County. Of course, yeah, I should specify that. That's my project.
And those five projects all go in at one time? To get this grant money, or?
Not, not to pursue grant money, no. They, these, these five projects go in at once for the consultants to devise that planning document.
I see.
That can be used individually to pursue grant dollars. And that's a really excellent question. I'll, I'll mention, in our discussions with the city of Alba, they had a couple of city council members who, you know, raised their hands and said, well, you know, for the city of Alba, public Wi-Fi may not be the most immediate need that we see on the table for us. And we totally understand that. And what's really terrific about going into this project and, and looking at it the way we are, is that, to a very certain degree, but to a, to a degree, fiber optic infrastructure is somewhat future-proof. What, what data it can deliver is based on what data nodes it's connected to on either end of the glass. So if we can plan for a project like this, in the case of the city of Alba, it may not be something they want to go out for grant funds, although we're anticipating some very good opportunities in the near future. It may not be something they want to do in the near future, but this planning document is something they can retain, and whenever that is one of their top priorities, it's something they can pursue like that.
Thank you.
Okay, no further questions, thank you.
Madam Mayor, I make the motion, the city council approve the agreement with EdCog to pursue the planning stage at no cost for Windsboro's identified public broadband project.
I second that.
Hold on approval.
Aye.
Okay, thank you gentlemen for coming.
Thank you all very much.
Okay, next we go to 7.2, Consider Applying for the Parks and Recreation Board.
Now, it's my turn. It's our busy time of year, all the outdoor enthusiasts, so we are excited to be hopefully welcoming a new board member. We met, the way our meetings have been timed out for quite some time now, we meet in the very mornings of the council meeting. So the Parks Board unanimously approved Siobhan Duffy as a new member to our board this morning. Now it is up to y'all. I have those minutes, if anybody wanted to see those. I think y'all should recognize Ms. Duffy, because she's, she's joined another board recently, I believe, for the city, so she's a go-getter. We, we like her already. She wants to be involved, she's trying to dive in and serve where she can, and that's just all the things that we're looking for. And of course, has some, has some great love for some of our parks. So if y'all want Siobhan to come up and pressure her, or if y'all have questions for me or her, I'm sure we'd be happy to, to help.
Hello.
Any questions?
Welcome. Oh, I'm, I'm sorry.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you.
I wonder who pressured you so much? Thank you.
You're welcome.
We need you.
I'm ready to serve, so.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I make the motion, the council approve the appointment of, I've got to look, Siobhan Duffy to the Parks and Recreation Board.
I second that.
Hold on approval.
Aye.
Siobhan, we're ready for you to get after there with the parks. Thank you for serving, a willing servant. Okay, so next we have 7.3, Consider Waveback Requests for the 2022 graduates, waiver fees for the city facilities. Okay, so, I'll just say, my daughter is a 20, I asked for this to be done.
I was wondering who was going to sign this. I'll have to.
Yeah, what it is, this is project graduation celebration. They try to do it every year. They try to do it every year. My daughter's a senior this year, that's why my name is on the request, I'm one of the parents. So what it is, is this is what happens after graduation, it's a place to go for all the seniors and the one guest to go, they have games, they can win, all different kinds of items. I mean, it's just, it's amazing what people donate and what they give to these students at project graduation celebration. I know it says it's the parents of the seniors, but I have served before on the board when my child wasn't a senior, and it's, it's really a fun time. If you've never done it, I would highly recommend trying it one time, you have a blast. So that is what it's for, it's for the actual grounds and the civic center. So.
Is that also for the swimming pool?
Uh, I believe so.
Yes. Yeah, let's save that.
The only thing I don't think was worth, they were asked, this year we asked, was for the Jack Cross pavilion, but I think all the rest of it is, we're begging and pleading for, it's a good cause, it keeps all the students safe. I mean, if any questions ask me, yes sir.
May 28th.
May 28th.
Requested amount is not filled in there?
Well, I had to be, the reason why I didn't is because at the time, I did not know how much it was for each individual service.
So, so if you have over a hundred people at the swimming pool, then that's a hundred and fifty dollars an hour that's being waived, plus the civic center.
And it will be over a hundred people.
And this, this does not waive the deposit requirements?
No, no. The deposit, we will put up the deposit and make sure everything's good, and checked, and approved, and get a deposit.
And this is something we do every year for the kids, because it gives them place to go after graduation, so they don't get in trouble. Not that they would.
And for those of y'all that don't know, what they do is after graduation is over, they have buses at the school, so that the students do not drive themselves over to the park, they all ride a bus.
Good.
To the park, and when the event is over, usually four, five o'clock in the morning, give or take, they have to get on the bus, and they have to go back to the school, and at that time, they can get in a car and leave. Of course, the parents will be made aware of the times and everything else, so they know where exactly where the students are.
Council, any other questions?
I have none.
Yes.
Yes, I can.
Hearing no questions, or hear a motion?
I move that we approve the fee waiver for the civic center and city pool for the class of 2022.
Have a motion, or hear a second?
I second the motion.
Have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, hearing, did you have something?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no? Motion carries.
Thank you, I'm the senior class, thank you. Okay, so let's move on to, are we at seven point four? Seven, seven point four, I consider a fee, fee waiver request by the Windsboro News.
In, I'm sorry, I'm Chuck Roy, I'm the owner of the Windsboro News. In keeping with our transparency that we have established long ago in Texas, and especially in our city council operations, the Windsboro News wants to present the qualifications to all candidates for the upcoming election for city council seats. We would like to reserve the civic center for that event on the evening of April the 26th, I believe, and invitations will be presented to all the candidates, both incumbents and the challengers, to present their qualifications in open forum. To receive questions, to be able to present their qualifications and why they are the best choice for the constituency to consider their reelection or election to, I don't know, the board or the city council. Any questions, you have a minute?
Kind of a question of Angie, actually. Angie, we have this, there was a forum held last year, sponsored by the newspaper, at the civic center, were there any fees involved in that that were?
Probably so. I didn't serve either.
I believe we've already submitted our deposit, we don't anticipate asking for anything like that. The only other incumbents, incumbents we may eventually request, and it's still under, under discussion and consideration of whether or not we need security, we found in our last forum, security is a good idea.
Any more questions?
Any questions? There'll be another kind of newspaper with August 2nd, we'll roll it out now, it'll be presumed that we get a waiver, and not fully directed, we think this is important to, something that the people of the Windsboro area deserve in the future.
Thank you.
Well, it's certainly a community service that you're doing for the citizens and the candidates running.
We feel wrong about that.
And we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Want to add any questions?
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve waiving the fees, the fee request for the Windsboro newspaper, for the forum to be held on April 26, 2022.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, it's okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we are seven point five, consider contract for joint election services. Do we have any questions regarding this?
Madam Mayor, I make the motion, the council approve the contract for joint election services with Franklin County.
I second.
Okay, all in approval?
Aye.
No opposed, no motion, motion carries. Okay, next is seven point six. I consider fee for rate schedule revisions.
Another public works department, I have a question. Yes, Joella Kaz, public works director, good evening, mayor, council. What you have before you there is the fee revisions at the water department, utility department, and all come together with the help at city hall, the ladies at city hall to help us with this, and they haven't, they haven't been revised in probably about eight, eight to 10 years, so we're looking to get an increase on those since our suppliers, and as you know, all our parts and supplies are going up, so the fees you're looking at front of you is only for the water and sewer taps, it's to, it's to the new construction. Normally, every now and then, we have to do a, maybe go out and just do a re-tap on somebody's line, just, just for a bigger, and these fees will be for that. And as y'all know, the, these fees are come with the meters most of the time, it depends on which they get, but if there's new construction in, in the city of Windsboro, we don't try to deter that, so we keep the prices where, where it is affordable, but with, with price changes today, and our suppliers, we're having to go up some, the cost of, the crew getting out digging that hole, most of our mains are under street still, so we have to cut that street and repair that street back, all the way to the top with the, with the base and asphalt, so all that entails in that price, okay? And if there's any questions on any of that from y'all, I can answer them for y'all.
Well, I have two questions.
Sure.
I'm a little bit amazed at the cost difference, the requested amounts that are being posted now, and I realize that materials have gone out. So I guess my first question is, first of all, these services are performed by our city staff?
Yes, our crew, that's right.
And there was, is there, am I right in assuming that there was not a four-inch pipe that says on the water tap, four-inch water tap, that's kind of highlighted in red, was there not a four-inch previous to this proposal?
No, there, there's not, there's not any taps at these addresses, it'll probably be like a new construction, a home being built on a site, where there's no utilities in existence.
Okay, and you have another?
That's okay, and that, that four-inch would be, that four-inch would be a sewer pipe.
Yes.
And there was not one previously installed?
No.
Okay, so on the three-quarter by five-eighths inch, we're looking at almost double?
Yes, it's like a 80% price increase on that, I understand, it's, I got a, I got a breakdown here of, which I don't have that for y'all, but where these, the city's costing along that now, we did a breakdown of our supplies from, from the time we get to that pipe, and, and all parts and pieces it takes to get it to the property was running right at a thousand dollars, that's the city's cost. It would, it come out, it come out to be actually nine hundred and twenty, you know, give or take.
On the three-quarter, it's seven fifty-four, rounded, and on the one inch, it's nine ninety-eight. And you're dropping the three and a half inch, it looks like? Or one and a half.
One and a half.
One and a half, yeah.
Don't use that.
We don't give that as an option.
Mr. Corin, I am speaking to the presenter.
Yes, we don't give that inch and a half meter an option no more, it's just, either there's a, it just takes so much more for supplies and to keep stock, to where we offer the customer a, a one inch, which that's basically used for any yards or anything, that's, that's good enough flow rate through a meter to, to irrigate anybody's yards, or they can jump to a two inch.
And on the two inch, you would be getting an increase of over a thousand dollars.
Yes, ma'am, that's a forty-eight, forty-eight, we have it at a 48% increase, and what that, what that is, normally, anybody needing a two inch this day and time is, is some business of, given, for example, nursing homes, car washes, they use two inch, that's, and not saying there isn't any house that couldn't use a two inch, you rarely see it. It's, it's going to be a huge business normally that uses lots of volume of water.
Well, my concern is the large increase in, in jumping up those fees, however, I know that getting water and so forth is extremely important.
Yes.
Especially new construction. On the four inch, there is a paragraph below where you have the requested fees, the adjustments, and it says, any type, any taps over two inch will be contracted out in the event a customer requests the city to install a new meter, where the tap has already been made and the box is in place, these shall be the actual cost of the meter, plus cost of materials and like, is that something that should be also edited and corrected?
Yes, ma'am, we, we can have that edited, corrected, normally, when it's contracted out, it, it's normally of a, a six inch or bigger, and that's, that's, for instance, hospitals, big living centers, your, your apartment buildings and such, that, the prison's the only one we have that has a six inch meter, the hospital has four to give you kind of in mind what that delivers.
So four, four we would do in-house, but six we would contract out?
Yes, ma'am.
Then if you would also please change that, that in the document, staff? Thank you for answering my question.
Yes, and, and like I said, we haven't had a price increase on this in quite a while, we, we was able to keep it down for a while, but the, everything's just going up so much with our suppliers.
This is everything.
Absolutely. And one, can I have one other thing, too? When, when these taps are made, when they, they purchase that water tap, that five-eighths by three-quarter meter, which is normally used at any residential house, and that's probably what the most of you have at your house, it, it supplies it all, when they pay for that combo, it supplies it with the meter, and that meter now is a radio read, and that's where most of that cost is, that, that radio read meter has gone up so much, and, and that way the city, or any other city does it, when that customer buys that meter and pays for that tap, that meter is good for life for them, unless they break it, and I say life, it's got like a 15 or 20-year life expectancy on those batteries, but the city doesn't turn around and charge them for another meter when, when it goes dead, the city pays that cost and puts that in.
And that's the meters that you can just drive by?
Yes, they're drive-by, that's right, they're drive-by meters, so that, that's, that's a big swing there that, that will, that that customer know that the only way they'll be out any more money on that is if they break that meter with alum or, or some damage done on their part. I also did check in with surrounding cities of equal size to us, and, and the city of Hawkins charged fifteen hundred for, for the three, the five-eighths by three-quarter meter, the smallest meter you can purchase from us in any rural water or city, they're, they're like, they're in the same area, we are fifteen hundred, fifteen hundred for both, they do fifteen hundred for sewer, fifteen hundred for water, we, we're wanting our rate to go seventeen for the water and thirteen for the sewer, and like I was explaining to our city administrator, that in our city streets, we're having to dig two holes, we can't use a common ditch anymore, that was changed many years ago, where we got to keep our water and sewer separated nine foot apart, so that's two trenches we got to dig, two trenches we got to repair back, so it helps us counter on that cost.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Thank you all.
Madam Mayor, I make the motion, the city council approve the fee schedule revisions with the corrections as noted by Councilwoman Morris on the taps over four inches.
All in approval?
Aye.
No opposed, motion carries. Thank you again, Mr. Kelly. Okay, so now we're down to eight questions with an immediate. Yes, sir.
I'm Chuck Roy, the owner of the Windsboro News. My comments tonight are probably more of a testimony than they are of actually asking a question. Kristoff W., Wood County Industrial Group, WCEDC, petitioned me a couple of years ago, probably just to start with, I just happen to own a newspaper, I'm a registered professional electrical engineer. My entire career has been surrounded with communication systems, earth satellite, tropo-scatter, just about every type of communication possible, including deep space communications. So as that, I put myself in a position of maybe having a little bit more than tangential knowledge of how communication systems works. What these gentlemen are proposing can be a game changer for our communities. My testimony here tonight is to be careful as you move forward. How many times have we heard, laughingly so, "I'm here from the government and I'm here to help you." Please, spend some time, review this. I spent enough time in the military to know that I'm not going to volunteer for anything, but if I can assist you in the evaluation of the cost benefits, and there will be some costs, and when you're talking about the opportunity to get millions of dollars, maybe a billion dollars, and whatever those other Obama numbers may be, there will be cost to this city, is worthwhile from the information that I got, but please, get some help, study this, it's an important feature for our community. I myself am here in Windsboro, because almost 100% of my business is done online, in the internet. online, in the internet, we have seventy writers that participate in the Community Chronicle. Four or five of them I've never met, and they've been working for me for six or seven years. Telecommuting works, you have to have that kind of backbone to support it, I'd love to see the City of Windsboro do this, but don't break your financial backs doing it. If I can help, ask. I'm sorry, that was more of a testimony than a question.
Okay, we appreciate it, thank you. Okay, so if there is nothing further, the next regular city council meeting will be held on April twelfth, twenty twenty-two, about thirty p.m. If any request needs to be placed on the agenda, must be completed and turned into City Hall, no labor than noon on Monday, eight days prior for the scheduled meeting. I believe that's all we have, so we thank everyone for coming, and the Windsboro City Council is now adjourned at six nineteen p.m. Thank you.
Thank you.